Good afternoon. Welcome to the September 22nd.
I have an empty chair for a call.
Oh, wait a minute. We gotta get a couple of folks in the door to have a call. Huh. All right. We'll start again. Good afternoon. Welcome to the September 22nd meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. I'd like to commend our meeting instructions to those of you who wish to speak to us today. You can get a copy of those out front. If you wish to speak to us, we'd ask that you sign up with one of these sign-up sheets, which you can also obtain. Deliver them to our secretary up here at the front. Please keep your comments brief, direct, and to the point. If somebody else has raised a particular point or spoken on that, just hopefully they've covered the point and we won't need to cover it again. That said, commissioners, I have received the minutes from the September 8th meeting. Do we have enough?
I'm not here. I'll second.
I believe that we receive the minutes.
Yes. Bob and I weren't here, so I think we'll have to defer.
Oh, okay.
Receive of those. We don't have enough that we're here.
We can't receive.
We can't receive. Can we receive? I've ran them.
You're voting. I don't know.
Yeah, I think we need. We should wait. Okay, we'll defer the minutes to the receipt of the minutes to the next meeting, okay? All right. Continuance requests?
We have four uncontested requests for continuance. On your agenda, those would be item B-18 for PUD 1622, to defer that to October 13th; item B-19 for PV-098, to defer to October 27th; item B-20 is Comp Plan Amendment, to defer indefinitely; and item B-21 is the Associated PUD, PUD 614, to also defer indefinitely.
Is anybody here to speak to us on any of these uncontested continuances?
Yeah, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. On item 18, PUD 1622, rather than the October 13th, we'd request the continuance be to the October 27th.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay.
I approve of the continuances, amending number 18 to the October 27th date.
Okay, we have motion to continue the uncontested continuances, changing the date of item number 18.
Second.
Cast your votes. Those are approved.
We also received four new requests for continuance for item B-7, which is case PC-10454, to defer that to November 10th; item B-12 for CE-940, to defer to October 13th; item B-13, which is SPUD-917, to defer to October 13th; and item B-17 for PUD-1624, to defer to October 13th.
Is anybody here to speak to us on any of these continuances?
Yeah, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. On item 18, PUD 1622, rather than the October 13th, we'd request the continuance be to the October 27th.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay.
I approve of the continuances, amending number 18 to the October 27th date.
Okay, we have motion to continue the uncontested continuances, changing the date of item number 18.
Second.
Cast your votes. Those are approved.
We also received four new requests for continuance for item B-7, which is case PC-10454, to defer that to November 10th; item B-12 for CE-940, to defer to October 13th; item B-13, which is SPUD-917, to defer to October 13th; and item B-17 for PUD-1624, to defer to October 13th.
Is anybody here to speak to us on any of these continuances? Mr. Cedric, are you here? Okay. All right. Commissioners, any action on these?
I move to continue items 7, 12, 13, and 17.
I move to continue items 7, 12, 13, and 17.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the new request for continuances. Cast your votes. Those are approved.
On to the consent docket, we have two items on consent, case PC-10408 and case C-6847.
Anyone present to speak to us on the consent docket?
I move the consent docket.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes. Those items are approved.
Under items requiring separate vote, item number three is case SPUD-919. This is to rezonate 10524 South Broadway Avenue from AA and C3 to SPUD-919.
Good afternoon. Jason Spencer with Craft and Toll here on behalf of the applicant. We've got an SPUD application for a two-acre site, and we're seeking to create two tracks in order to expand the existing Ranchwood Veterinary Office. It's located on the southwest corner of 104th and Santa Fe. Track one would have R1 base zoning and would consist of an existing residential house that's there, a single-family residential house. And it's on the west. Track two would be a C3 base zoning, but it would be limited to uses that correspond to the adjacent Ranchwood Veterinary Clinic. The Spud provides for site proof screening, architectural standards for any new buildings that would be built, and further limits, if there's any kennels, to being indoors. Staff's recommended for approval, and we agree with the one to you. We'll ask for your approval.
Commissioners, nobody's signed up on this matter. Any questions for the applicant?
Well, I have a question that relates to the person that wrote the letter about the -- your client has tied into their sewer system at times, and they have problems of backflow, and by increasing the activity, the C3 activity, I don't understand. Do you know anything about the tying in of the sewer issue, of this, what this person's talking about?
It's my understanding that the existing veterinary clinic, along with the retail center to the west, they sewer to a private lift station that pumps across 104th Street to the north, so, and at that point, it ties into a public eight-inch sewer line. And it's my understanding that after they had put in that lift station and made the connection, there was an issue with backup. I don't know that there's been any issues since then, and so I don't know if there was a clog or something at that point, but the amount of sewage that would come out of the veterinary clinic and any expansion of that is not something that should be overwhelming an eight-inch line. They're at the uphill end of an eight-inch line, but if any additional buildings are built on this, they would be located on top of where that private lift station is, so that would have to be redone, and we'd make sure to meet all city requirements at that time.
Is that a recent construction of the lift station, or has it been there for a while, or do you have?
Been there for several years.
For what?
For several years, my understanding.
So it could have been not there that involved this person that wrote the letter, that the backup might have been there prior to the time that the lift station was there, and they had problems before. They didn't sign up, is that right? Yeah. Yeah, so, okay.
I have a question on this. It's really, I guess, one for staff. That one of the allowed uses is interment services, funeral interment service cremating, limited to the cremation of animals by chemical process. It's something I'm not at all familiar with, but I just wonder if there are -- is that something that would be allowed by right in C3, or is it something that would be a special permit kind of thing, or a conditional permit thing? Are there issues or concerns about cremating things chemically that we ought to be thinking about? Looking at you, JJ.
I'm not familiar with that process either. The applicant may be able to explain it, but it would be, it would have been a special permit use that they've added. The cremation would have been a special permit use.
We met with staff early on to talk about how to put that in there, and that was what was recommended, was putting that use to right and what it was. I understand the chemical cremation process, it's just a new way of how they do it. I believe it's odorless, and I don't think any surrounding community would know what was going on there, but I believe it's a little less intense than traditional cremation.
I guess my concerns were more sort of environmental. I, as I said, I don't really know anything at all about that.
And obviously, we'd have to meet all requirements with the disposal of any of that waste that's produced.
I guess I would like to have it removed and put back into a special permit category, but I'm, I don't feel like I have quite enough information to stand on that, so, if nobody else has any concerns about it, I'll move approval.
Second. All right, a motion is second to approve item three. Cast your votes. Item is approved. Thank you, sir.
Item four is PC-10467, to rezonate 2911 Northwest 29th Street from R1 to C3.
State your name and your address, please, sir.
Mohammed Almorpur, 3715 Northwest 46th Street.
Tell us what you want to do with your application, please.
I own the strip center at 3001 North May and the property 2911 Northwest 29, which is located west of my property. I own both of them, and I would like to use that as O2 for parking space.
This is, I've spoken to Mr. Almorpur, we spoke yesterday, or the day before. This is just a little commercial strip there along May. It's currently empty. It's been empty for a while, and that's basically because it doesn't have enough for any parking. Nonetheless, there's, you know, infill and redevelopment going on to the west of it, so I was not entirely comfortable with the idea of straight C3 zoning. We visited, he indicated that it really was just parking that he was needing, so he agreed to amend the application to O2. Is there anybody here who has signed up to speak on the matter?
Just the applicant.
If none of the commissioners have any questions or concerns, I'll move approval.
Subject as condition?
Yes, O2 to O2.
Right. Okay.
Second.
It will be amended to I2.
O2, O2 office, so it'll be a down zoning.
Second.
Okay, motion is second to approve item number four, as with zoning to O2 versus the C3 as proposed. Cast your votes. That item is approved.
Thank you.
Item number five is case PC-10468, to rezonate 2609 North Bartel Road from I1 and I2 to R2.
State your name and your address, please, sir.
Good afternoon. Steve Rollins, Arc Engineering Consultants, 135 Deer Creek Road in Edmond, representing the applicant. We're rezoning about 24 acres here from I1 and I2 to an R2 residential zoning. The developer plans to, depending on what the market demands, single-family homes and possibly duplexes, if that's what the market demands. But if there are any other questions regarding the application, I'd be happy to address those.
I have a question about, I'm just concerned about the density. Do you have any idea of the duplexes or single-family homes, or do you have any idea of what that looks like, what ratio are we talking about?
I really don't. Like I said, it really depends on what the market demands in the area. If it's, if single-family homes are selling, then I think the developer plans to do all single-family homes. If it's, you know, if they're not selling, I think phase one will be all single-family. But if it's not selling, then the next phase may go to a duplex-type situation.
Let me ask you one more question, related to possibly non-support residential kinds of things that really are to would allow you. Are all of those planned to be duplexes and single-family residents? Or is there any other non-supportive things?
To my knowledge, everything is, will either be duplex or single-family homes. Yes, sir.
Okay. I think this is a good development for the area, and certainly moving it from I2 down to R2 is something that I could support. And there are no comments from commissioners?
Nobody's signed up.
Okay. I move for adoption.
Second. Motion is second to approve item five. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
That item is approved.
Item six is DA-24692. It's a lot-split deed approval for 3422 Northwest 135th Street. This also requires a variance to the sub-rags.
Hello?
Hello. Jim King, 3404 Northwest 135th Street, Oklahoma City.
Tell us a little bit about your application, Mr. King.
We had purchased this parcel. It's a part of a larger parcel that, when it was developed, it was not broken up into lots. It's been divided up several different times. We bought basically kind of the final parcel, the final piece there, and what we're wanting to do is just make that, office buildings that are like the current office buildings that are there, it's just that we have, since we're the last ones, we have to get a lot-split approval to do that.
Commissioners, nobody's signed up on this, there is a variance that we need to, if we're going to approve, approve to item two.
So, my question about this was, will there be any additional lot splits? I mean, is this the last one of these we're looking at here?
It's the last one that I'm aware of. That's the only parcel we own, and as far as I know, I think we're kind of the last ones to buy this, buy the part of this original parcel.
Okay. I'll move a variance to Section 3.4.4.2CF.
Second. Motion to approve the variance to TE2. Cast your votes.
I'll move the application.
Motion to approve the application.
Second.
And that's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven was continued, so item eight is case CE-941, to close a portion of Southeast 30th Street.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, Ms. Island Fox, who is also here. Our application today is to close approximately two feet. This is a building that was built in the early 50s, and at the time, they didn't have the equipment we have today, and it wasn't placed exactly perhaps where it should have been. My client didn't find this out until she was sitting at a closing table, trying to sell this building. So what we seek to do today is to close the approximate two feet this building encroaches, to then go vacate those two feet, to allow this building to sell. And I apologize for my voice.
Commissioners, nobody's signed up on this one.
My first reaction was, tear the building down.
Right, exactly.
I don't think that works. I'm going to approve of the application.
Motion is second to approve item number eight. Cast your votes. That item is approved.
Item number nine is CE-937, to close a portion of the street right-of-way located at 1220 Northwest 51st Street.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates, here on behalf of the applicant. Also here today is some representatives from American Fidelity Corporation, who own the two buildings west of Edna's, and we've met with them, and they are supportive of a change that we made to our application. Last time we were here, we were talking about closing this portion of the street and using the parking lot as the circulation for emergency vehicles. After hearing their concerns about their current parking conditions, our client has agreed to put a public cul-de-sac back in, and then build the parking on their lease that they have from ODOT on the property east of there. So with that, everybody's in agreement, and I appreciate your.
And emergency services are all okay with that?
Yeah, they have, I sent this to the staff, but I'm sure they haven't seen it yet. We just agreed on this yesterday, but this is what they wanted in the first place.
Oh, okay.
So I'm sure that they'll be okay with that. It's a public, meets all public standards.
Okay, so if there's anybody in the back that, you know, has a problem with it, it's kind of a speak now and forever hold your peace thing, I guess. If there's not anybody else who's signed up to speak, commissioners don't have any other additional questions or concerns, I'll move approval.
Second. Motion is second to approve item nine. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
That item is approved. Thank you, Tim.
Item 10 is C-6839, the preliminary plat of Kennard Ranch. This also does require a variance to the sub-rags.
Brad Reed with Craft and Toll, 214 East Main, on behalf of the applicant. This item was continued last week. There is the variance number three. We don't think we need this variance. There's, we're working concurrently with the legacy addition to the south. A sub-street will be put in at the time of construction, so we'll meet the requirement for traffic on that. Also, number seven on the TE says that the sub-street needs to line up with their approved plat. Again, we're working with them, agreed to move it to where our location is at now. This was continued last week because there was a question about the common area. We've added a common area. It's up there on, off of Lecter Avenue, 6,300 feet of recreational common area, centrally located. If you guys have any questions, we have to answer them.
Sorry. If I could, so you've got now the access, because our map and our staff report didn't have the, we didn't have any labeling, so.
Yeah, to the south.
To the south.
The small sub-street with the kind of the curve in.
That's, that's what you're speaking of, is into legacy, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. And then you got one on the west side also.
Yeah, that will be going into the ranch right now, but.
Okay, and then where's the common area? I can't.
It's in the middle. It's on, we.
Right there?
Yeah, right.
Where the hand is?
Yes.
Okay. And then you still have the common area down in the west.
The original common area, yes.
Corner, southwest corner.
Yes.
All right.
So you're saying you don't need the variance?
No. If, if at the time that construction doesn't work out, then I think that we could, we could work with the fire marshal on a, an emergency access until the time when that sub-street's put in.
Well, so then, the only real concern, I guess, that, that is, I have, is just that these lots are sort of smaller than anything around it. The density, you know, it's, it's very dense.
We do meet the zoning requirement. I think the lots are, they're 55 by 115. The neighboring properties, they're 60 by 120s, so they're not that dissimilar. It's R1 to R1.
We do have somebody signed up to speak on this.
Well, I think this is a continuation from last meeting, and we discussed where the common area.
Yes, sir.
Is. We ask you to maybe look at it and put it in a different spot, so it's more central by.
Yeah, that, that common area needs to stay where it's at. We did add a common area in the middle, 6,300 square feet of common area in the middle that we located.
No, our maps, well, our maps turned upside.
Commissioner Allen.
It's rotated, and we don't have street.
Commissioner Allen.
And we've added, they've added a common area, Jim, versus the last time.
Is it that lot that doesn't have a number on it?
Yes, sir.
If you can go down here where the can, that's where it is.
Yeah.
Okay, I see.
That's why.
I wasn't looking at, I was looking, Mike.
Yeah, your staff report doesn't have the, the correct map.
Okay.
So, okay, so do we still need this variance, JJ, with this new access?
You can delete TE3 and vote the rest of the technical evaluations in as is.
So three can go out.
Delete it.
Okay, and then the rest of them stay? Okay. Now, let's hear from Ms. Ewing, if we could. Peggy Ewing?
Hello.
Hi, good afternoon. Would you please state your name and where you live, Ms. Ewing?
Of course. My name is Peggy Ewing, and my address is 7724 Sandlewood Drive, Oklahoma City. My property backs up directly to the proposed plots.
Okay.
One of my concerns was the size of the lots, like Ms. Powers. They seem to be quite a bit smaller than ours, and definitely smaller than the Habitat for Humanity lots to their south. Another concern I had was the other entrance exit. I didn't want Wilshire getting real congested. Looks like they've kind of addressed that. My last concern is that our homes, more on the north end of this, are up on it, built up on a hill, and I look, I would say probably four feet above the four-foot fence when I am standing on my patio. And my concern is, are they planning some kind of fencing? Hopefully, it's tall enough so that I'm not staring down into their home, and they're staring up into my home. I'm sure they would appreciate the privacy just as much as myself, and I'll just be looking at brick houses, one on top of the other, when I'm used to seeing beautiful pasture land and horses. And I know that's beyond your control, but that's one of the main reasons I bought the house. So I'm kind of concerned about how close they'll be, and that I'll just see nothing but homes, because I'm up higher. It's about a four-foot drop on those yards.
To those yards?
Yes. I have photos, but they're terrible quality. You're welcome to look at them. I'm not real good with technology of any kind. But that, those were my concerns, and it looks like a couple of them have been dealt with, but that last one kind of concerns me. I would like to know if they're planting a fence, what, you know, kind of fence they're planting, how tall this fence might be. There's an existing fence there now, but it's just a four-foot.
Right.
You know, chain link.
Right. Okay. Any questions for Ms. Ewing, commissioners?
Are all of your, in your neighborhood, are all of those homes fenced already, or are they just looking over the pasture that used to?
No, they are fenced. There's actually, I do believe that part of the fence belongs to the ranch, because it's just a metal rail, and then we, as homeowners, have gone back and put, attached chain link to that, so I'm, I'm assuming that will be gone when the ranch is gone. But I think that part of that belongs to the ranch, and part of it belongs to us. But they, yes, they are fenced all the way down.
Applicant, you want to come back up? Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Of course, thank you.
Appreciate you coming down.
I appreciate it.
You want to speak to Ms. Reed, Ms., excuse me, Ms. Ewing's concern?
On the, on the fill area, as you can see, there's a, that area is actually really flat. We're going to be doing quite a bit of fill up in that corner where I think, where I think her property is. That corner is going to have two feet of fill, three feet of fill, to get the drainage to work, so the grade change will have to change because of that.
And then, with respect to the fencing there along the, you want to speak to that?
Six-foot privacy fence, you know, pretty standard for most houses. I don't know if I can, we, we'll have to put the fencing in off of the arterial road, but the grade change won't be as drastic once we actually develop the site.
All right, commissioners, any questions? We're here on a preliminary plat.
Because I would like to have seen that in my packet, then you could look at it and measure, et cetera, but if I, I see that right, you've taken two 50-foot frontage lots in the middle of this and said, that's the common area for the neighborhood.
The common area is still going to be near enough. The common area is still going to be the main common area that we had planned originally.
That's way in the south, in the southeast, that, that corner, and the way my map shows is that that was going to be a primary exit or entrance at some point in time to the adjoining neighborhood. There's a street there.
Yeah, that was the, what I was, we have, the original legacy preliminary plat did have a street there. That's also where the drainage comes on to them. We're working with the Habitat for Humanity people right now, doing construction plans, final plat, to, and they're in agreement to move that sub-street up to our proposed location here.
So, so that would never be used as an access to your subdivision, where the southeast common area is?
No, sir.
So that's now going to be a separate place to put whatever amenities you're going to do for the neighborhood?
Yeah, it's going to be, there's going to be a wet bottom pond there, walking trails, park benches, things like that.
A walking trail?
Around the, around the pond itself.
Not to put too fine a point on it, I'm pretty sure it's just one lot, not two.
Well, just.
That is one lot of common area. I will say that they are within the rags.
I've spoken with Commissioner Yoffel about this.
It meets the rags, and we don't necessarily have a reg with respect to location.
And he was hopeful that you would come back with something better, and I think that he probably would have the same comment on this, on this that you've come back with, and it's not something better.
The way this property lays out, the common area that we had originally, I understand the want of a centrally located common
Item 10 is C-6839, the preliminary plat of Kennard Ranch. This also does require variance to the sub-rags.
Brad Reed with Crafton-Soul, 214 East Main, on behalf of applicant. This item was continued last week. There is the variance number three. We don't think we need this variance. There's, we're working concurrently with the legacy addition to the south. A stub street will be put in at the time of construction. So we'll meet the requirement for traffic on that. Also, number seven on the TE says that the stub street needs to line up with their approved plat. Again, we were working with them, agreed to move it to where our location is at now. This was continued last week because there was a question about the common area. We've added a common area. It's up there on, off of Lecter Avenue, 6,300 feet of recreational common area, centrally located. If you have any questions, we have to answer them.
Sorry. If I could, so you've got now the access, because our map and our staff report didn't have the, we didn't have any labeling, so.
Yeah, to the south.
To the south.
The small stub street with the kind of the curve in.
That's what you're speaking of, is into legacy, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. And then you've got one on the west side also.
Yeah, that will be going into the ranch right now, but.
Okay. And then where's the common area? I can't.
It's in the middle. It's on, we.
Right there?
Yeah, right.
Where the hand is?
Yes.
Okay. And then you still have the common area down in the west.
The original common area, yes.
Corner, southwest corner.
Yes.
All right.
So you're saying you don't need the variance?
No. If at the time that construction doesn't work out, then I think that we could, we could work with Fire Marshal on an emergency access until the time when that stub street's put in.
Well, so then the only real concern, I guess, that, that is, I have, is just that these lots are sort of smaller than anything around it. The density, you know, it's, it's very dense.
We do meet the zoning requirement. I think the lots are, they're 55 by 115. The neighboring properties, they're 60 by 120s. So they're not that dissimilar. It's R1 to R1.
We do have somebody signed up to speak on this.
Well, I think this is a continuation from last meeting. And we discussed where the common area is.
Yes, sir.
We ask you to maybe look at it and put it in a different spot so it's more central by.
Yeah, that, that common area needs to stay where it's at. We did add a common area in the middle. 6,300 square feet of common area in the middle, if you like.
No, our maps, well, our maps turned upside.
Commissioner Allen.
It's rotated, and we don't have street.
Commissioner Allen.
And we've added, they've added a common area, Jim, versus the last time.
Is it that lot that doesn't have a number on it?
Yes, sir.
If you can hear where it can.
The new one?
That's where it is.
Yeah.
Okay, I see.
That's why.
I wasn't looking at, I was looking at.
Yeah, your staff report doesn't have the correct map. So, okay, so do we still need this variance, JJ, with this new access?
You can delete TE3 and vote the rest of the technical evaluations in as is.
So 3 can go out. Okay, and then the rest of them stay? Okay. Now, let's hear from Ms. Ewing, if we could. Peggy Ewing?
Hello.
Hi, good afternoon. Would you please state your name and where you live, Ms. Ewing?
Of course. My name is Peggy Ewing, and my address is 7724 Sandlewood Drive, Oklahoma City. My property backs up directly to the proposed plots.
Okay.
One of my concerns was the size of the lots, like Ms. Powers. They seem to be quite a bit smaller than ours, and definitely smaller than the Habitat for Humanity lots to their south. Another concern I had was the other entrance exit. I didn't want Wilshire getting real congested. Looks like they've kind of addressed that. My last concern is that our homes, more on the north end of this, are up on it, built up on a hill. And I look, I would say probably four feet above the four-foot fence when I am standing on my patio. And my concern is, are they planning some kind of fencing? Hopefully, it's tall enough so that I'm not staring down into their home and they're staring up into my home. I'm sure they would appreciate the privacy just as much as myself. And I'll just be looking at brick houses, one on top of the other, when I'm used to seeing beautiful pasture land and horses. And I know that's beyond your control, but that's one of the main reasons I bought the house. So I'm kind of concerned about how close they'll be and that I'll just see nothing but homes, because I'm up higher. It's about a four-foot drop on those yards.
To those yards?
Yes. I have photos, but they're terrible quality. You're welcome to look at them. I'm not real good with technology of any kind. But that, those were my concerns, and it looks like a couple of them have been dealt with. But that last one kind of concerns me. I would like to know if they're planting a fence, what, you know, kind of fence they're planting, how tall this fence might be. There's an existing fence there now, but it's just a four-foot.
Right.
You know, chain link.
Right. Okay. Any questions for Ms. Ewing, commissioners?
Are all of your, in your neighborhood, are all of those homes fenced already? Or are they just looking over the pasture that used to?
No, they are fenced. There's actually, I do believe that part of the fence belongs to the ranch, because it's just a metal rail. And then we, as homeowners, have gone back and put, attached a chain link to that. So I'm, I'm assuming that will be gone when the ranch is gone. But I think that part of that belongs to the ranch and part of it belongs to us. But they, yes, they are fenced all the way down.
And applicant, you want to come back up? Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Of course.
Appreciate you coming down.
I appreciate it.
You want to speak to Ms. Reed, Ms., excuse me, Ms. Ewing's concern?
On the, on the fill area, as you can see, there's a, that area is actually really flat. We're going to be doing quite a bit of fill up in that corner where I think, where I think her property is. That corner is going to have two feet of fill, three feet of fill, to get the drainage to work. So the grade change will have to change because of that.
And then with respect to the fencing there along the, you want to speak to that?
Six-foot privacy fence, you know, pretty standard for most houses. I don't know if I can, we, we have to put the fencing in off of the arterial road, but the grade change won't be as drastic once, once we actually develop the site.
All right. Commissioners, any questions? We're here on a preliminary plat.
Because I would like to have seen that in my packet. Then you could look at it and measure, et cetera. But if I, I see that right, you've taken two 50-foot frontage lots in the middle of this and said, "That's the common area for the neighborhood."
The common area is still going to be near enough. The common area is still going to be the main common area that we had planned originally.
That's way in the south, in the southeast, that, that corner. And the way my map shows is that that was going to be a primary exit or entrance at some point in time to the adjoining neighborhood. There's a street there.
Yeah, that was the, what I was, we have, the original legacy preliminary plat did have a street there. That's also where the drainage comes on to them. Like, we're working with the Habitat for Humanity people right now, doing construction plans, final plat, to, and they're in agreeance to move that stub street up to our proposed location here.
So, so that would never be used as an access to your subdivision, where the southeast common area is?
No, sir.
So that's now going to be a separate place to put whatever amenities you're going to do.
Yeah, it's going to be, there's going to be a wet bottom pond there, walking trails, park benches, things like that.
A walking trail?
Around the, around the pond itself.
Not to put too fine a point on it, I'm pretty sure it's just one lot, not two.
Well, just.
It is.
That is one lot of common area. I will say that they are within the rags.
I've spoken with Commissioner Yocel about this.
It meets the rags, and we don't necessarily have a reg with respect to location.
And he was hopeful that you would come back with something better. And I think that he probably would have the same comment on this, on this that you've come back with, and it's not something better.
The way this property lays out, the common area that we had originally, I understand the, the want of a centrally located common area. The common area that we had originally met all of the requirements that were needed. The location wasn't something that you guys, but, so we worked.
Whose requirements?
The city of Oklahoma City requirement.
Subdivision.
We've been talking about this for years.
We need the recreational amount of common area.
For years.
If I, if I could, I understand we've been speaking to this, but we have no regulation with respect of location of common areas. So until that becomes that, we have to ask for accommodation to our suggestions that the common area be located centrally. So for the purposes of this application, I would suggest that we've met the requirements, and we need to move it up or down, but let's move it. Pardon me? Well, the stub street's going to stub into, I can't tell where it's going to work on Legacy. Is that?
Legacy Phase 2, it, it actually lines up with.
Lines up with that street?
That street that's right below it.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so you gotta bear with us, because we don't have any locations in our staff report, so it's difficult. So it lines up with Leichter or?
Yeah.
To Legacy.
Yes, sir.
It lines up with Reichter in Legacy. Pat, you can see that that would be where it would go into Legacy there. Sending. And so then you've got the access on the top out to Wilshire, and then the diagram that's in front of us really is just kind of rotated 90 degrees, or I guess, yeah, 90 degrees to the up and down.
And there's one additional stub to the east.
Correct. That's right.
Yeah, so Lecter Avenue, that's just to the south, that's where our stub street's now going to line up.
If, if there's no further discussion, I move for adoption.
Yes, just right quick, if you don't mind.
I don't understand how grading of his property changes the grading of my property. And it looks like to me that his common area is actually blocking the access from the Legacy Estates. I don't know.
Well, again, this map kind of does not show, the other map, it, it will show that it, they're going to take out that lot where it's, you see the nine, then a five? Hell, I can't, I can't see. So, I mean, you see, so that's going to line it up with that access.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, that's good. Now, as far as the grading of your property, how does that change me looking down on your, on all these homes? I don't see how it would.
It may, or it may not, but you're going to get some raise in their grade to where your, two feet is what he said, so that it won't necessarily be quite as down as perhaps what you were looking at and them looking up.
I understand what he's saying, but that seems kind of weird to me, that these houses are going to be up two feet higher. It seems weird, and my yard.
Well, I think what he's talking about is raising the grade of his property up an additional two feet, so I don't know if it'll make the houses up two feet higher or not. Commissioners, thank you, ma'am. Any additional questions? Action? Okay. We're deleting the variance to TE number three, and then do you agree with the rest of the TEs?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'm sorry, I forgot deleting the variance for TE3. I'll move for adoption.
Thank you.
I'm going to move, I'll second the variance, but I still have some concerns like Janice. I'm a little concerned with the width of the lots. I'm concerned that, go back to that other, go back to the plat map, please. The stub out on what we've got in our packet is different than what it is here on the, on the.
That's because I don't believe our packet showed the stub.
Well, the one on the packet shows, or in our packet shows, that there's a, a street in that subdivision to the south that runs right into the common area.
That's from the approved preliminary plat. That hasn't been constructed at this time.
That street doesn't exist?
No, sir. It's from the approved preliminary plat. That street stops before it gets there.
Most, all these lots are 50-foot wide, aren't they?
Fifty-five.
Another question is, is that you have these two common areas. I don't see an indication on anything that shows any access to the common areas from the street.
The common area on the, the south side, we have the whole street's running that common area. It's probably 200, 150 feet of, of road access.
Oh. What about the middle one? How do you get to that?
Just in front of that lot.
What?
Just in front of that. The way this is laid out, there wasn't a way for us to put one on a corner to get one centrally located, other than the one that was proposed at the southeast corner.
This is, you know, this is one of these things where, where we're analyzing something on a silver screen and not had time to analyze it and look at it. And with the admonition of coming back into this meeting with something better, I see you just put a little tiny footprint in that one little spot and really haven't made an effort to make this thing in a way that I think it should be. Small lots, no answers to the question about fencing, and I can't tell what access there is to the common areas or whatever the common areas are. So I'm, you know, I would like to see you go back to the drawing board a little bit. And I think that that's what Commissioner Yocel told me on the phone. He would expect much more than this.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Right, so if you're asking these guys, you're going to have to withdraw that motion. Ask them if they want to take a continuance. That's up to them. They are entitled to yes, no. So you've heard the comments. If you want to take a continuance, I'd ask that you tell us now so we can move on, or we'll vote. But you know what you're going to get the next time you come back. I mean, you get it? So I don't think any of the comments are necessarily going to change. This is the second time this one's been here, and I don't see a lot different than it was. I wasn't here the last time, but clearly the, the message seems to be the same. So I would admonish you, either if you're going to take a continuance, do something. If you're not, let's vote. But it's your application, not mine.
We would agree to take the continuance.
Do you own the property to the south?
No, sir. That's Habitat for Humanity.
It is your property?
Habitat for Humanity owns that property. We are in the process of working with them.
You're working with that, so that street where you've got it coming out is actually going to come out there and the other street?
Yes, sir. We've done the construction plans, ready to submit, so.
Must I withdraw my motion if he's going to take a continuance?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that run?
Withdraw my motion.
Okay, so the motion for continuance, excuse me, motion for approval is withdrawn. Motion for continuance?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to continue, item 10.
Second.
Cast your votes. I want to vote on the dang thing. Change your name. It's continued. Thank you very much.
Item number 11 is PUD 1620 to rezone 10-315 South Rockwell from AA to PUD 1620.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the developer. Also with me is Tim Johnson, who's a civil engineer for the project. This is a PUD application containing approximately 160 acres. What we seek to do is to develop a residential neighborhood similar in style to the neighborhood south of us called Rio de Bella. Rio de Bella has lot sizes below one acre. They have access to water and no sewer. It is identical to what we have, water, no sewer. What we seek to do is to match the development pattern that's immediately south of us. Additionally, you'll notice there is, I don't know if your map would show it, but several other plats that have been approved in the area for similar type of lot style. What we did when we began this process was hold the neighborhood meeting. The first neighborhood meeting had 20-plus people. Their main point of contention was a piece of commercial element included in our PUD that would have been right here in the corner, that would have been at the northwest corner of the intersection. And they made it clear that they moved out here to be inconvenienced, and they didn't want commercial, and they didn't want conveniences. So we agreed to take out the commercial. We had at least two subsequent meetings. Rather than protest growing and swelling like it typically does in cases like this, our numbers dwindled to three people at the next meeting, I believe, because they weren't at the first one. And I believe we had another meeting Monday, and only two people showed up. What we found through that was a lot of support for what we seek to do. That is, less than acre lots with water, keeping the sensitive waterways in areas in the northeast corner, as well as, you can see, through kind of the middle of the property right there. So because of that, the folks that live south of 104th in Rio de Bella are very much supportive. We do have some support letters. I don't know if any of them are here today, but as this commission knows, it's much easier to show up when you're not happy and here to protest, not to take time off of work to come agree with the developer. It's, it's worth noting in your staff report, if you turn to the last page, page 12, your staff has recommended denial, and I think it's important we focus on why. And that is, because it does not meet the competence of Plan Land Use Designation of Urban Reserve. While that sounds nice, if you dig deeper, what you find is, there is literally not a single zoning application that could possibly comply when the comp plan seeks to reserve this land. We met with staff time and time again, and that point was made clear, that there was no zoning application that we could submit that could possibly comply with a reserved land use designation. So when we look at the facts of this case, it's clear that urban development is not appropriate. I think two weeks ago, everybody agreed with that. I think the neighbors, the only reason they were giving us their support was conditioned upon the idea that sewer doesn't ever get here. Because if sewer does get here, everybody knows what will happen. Rather than slightly less than an acre, you're going to see 6,000 square foot lots. That is not a good scenario for anyone that lives out here, or for this land. What we seek to do through this application is just to mirror the development pattern that's been going on. We think the urban reserve layer was a mistake when it was put in, highlighted by the fact that the land south of us, which is already developed as exactly what we're trying to do, is also reserved. I don't know how you can reserve land that's already developed. Again, we think it was a mistake. We think what we've got is a reasonable application based upon the land use development pattern out there, and with that, we would ask for your support. The minimum is 30,000 square feet. Some will be, I believe, right out an acre. Our total density is 151 lots on 160 acres.
Commissioners, we have a couple of persons signed up to speak to us on this. Do you have any additional questions? Mr. Box, I know that you heard a pretty substantial portion of this at the last meeting. Any other questions? All right. Ms. Pennington? Could you come up, please, ma'am?
Hi.
My name is Joetta Pennington, 7648 Southwest 140, 104th Street. And I was looking at this development, and although they are mirroring something, I wish that they wouldn't mirror something that is not desirable. The deal is, their lots are less than an acre, and they are including their green belt to get that they have so many houses on such an amount of land. And I, if they could just go back and redraw it where each one of those lots are an acre, I think that we could all agree on it.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Pennington?
I'm Lawan Pennington. I live on Southwest 104th Street. Originally out here, it was one family per five acres. I talked about this last meeting we had, okay? That was the only meeting that I came to. All these other meetings he's talking about, I haven't been at. But that it's not approved for business is, is perfectly great with me, okay? It needs to be a true acre, like my wife said, because that's what they said on the other Rio de Bella, that it'd be one acre, and then they included other things that gets it down to less than acre, less than acre, less than acre. They also said adjacent to me would only be two properties. And there were two properties, and then one of those properties split in half, so now there's three neighbors on the side of me. There's different things that, that they get by because no one steps, steps up to speak on the issues. I just want to make sure that I don't have to forever hold my peace. I wanted to tell you that we want it to be a neighborhood, if they're going to do it, be a neighborhood that's nice, that's not dense. Because I moved rural, I like to keep it as rural as I can, because it's my investment, it's my life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Daniel, is it Swanner?
Yes.
Could you come up, please, sir?
I'm Daniel Swanner. I live at 10312 South Rockwell Avenue. And my main concern here is the flooding. My house is across the street from the subject, pardon, it looks like an L right there. You see there? There's a pond goes down, and it would go straight back to my house. And in front of my house, there's another creek that comes from the north-south. You see, I got a bridge up there, that little dark spot is a bridge on the side of the road. So when it, my bridge is 12 feet over the water, and the water's only about a foot in that creek, until it rains. And last year, when it rained, it was six feet over that bridge, so that water came up 18 feet. My house is 75 feet from the creek. From the top of the creek, the water was 35 feet in my front yard. So I'm worried, 150 houses in here, it's going to send a lot more water my way. I talked to the developer at the meeting the other day, and they said they'd be willing to put some retention plans in there. He sent me an email about the updated PUD that showed a retention plan, and I haven't, I don't know if you guys have that, or what situation was on that. But I seen in your last staffing report, page eight, item seven, Public Works under B2, it said detention is not required at this time. In the event of future flooding of structures downstream of this site, detention will be required in accordance with Article 16.9 of Oklahoma City Ordinance. I don't believe it's acceptable or right to ask my house to require it, and I'm absolutely against it. I just want whoever's in charge of flood plans, in charge of the, the water flow, to really thoroughly look at this and make sure my house isn't going to flood, and the two neighbors next to me, they're not going to flood either. You know, loss of life or loss of my property is pretty huge to me. So I don't care what they bury over there, I just don't get flooded.
Any questions for Mr. Swanner, or the Penningtons? I'm sorry, I didn't ask if you had any questions of the Penningtons. Thank you, sir.
I just need to make sure that I'm clear of where your property is, right?
Yep, that's the bridge, which is six foot underwater when it rains, and then my house is right behind it, looks like an L.
Okay.
So the one from the pond, it'll flood Rockwell. That creek floods Rockwell when it rains hard. There's not enough flowage underneath the street for that creek coming from the pond, so it floods there. And after it rises and gets over Rockwell, then it pushes that other creek water into my front yard.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions? Commissioners, nobody else has signed up? Tim, you want to talk to us?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Swanner and I have met and talked several times. His house is immediately east, as he's shown. We fully intend to improve this pond and require detention as part of this development. We added that from our meeting on Monday night, I added that to the document, sent that to the staff, and I think they included it in an email to you all. That was my understanding, but it is in there, despite what the Public Works comments, which is their standard comment for when it's not required, so by ordinance, we're not required. So by ordinance, we're not required. But because of the sensitivity of this, we agreed to put it in. And it'll, we'll do everything in our design power to make sure that we do not increase the runoff. And if at all possible, we'll reduce the runoff. So we are concerned, and we want to be considerate. Obviously, the road, Council, Rockwell Road and Oak County Road, the structures underneath Rockwell are undersized. Good news is, his house had still a lot of freeboard after that last big rain. But we're going to do everything we can to protect that.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson?
Tim, where is the water line? Does it show on that map?
No, it's not, but it runs southwest 104th, and then goes south on Rockwell to 119th and back.
And that's a 12-inch line?
12-inch border main that was put in as part of Rio de Bella. Will be required to extend that water main up to here as part of this development. So to provide better water, fire protection, these people, it's a lot easier to tie on the water than it is to tie on the sewer. But with water there, anybody who wants to tie into the potable water can do that.
How far is sewer away?
About 10 miles, $12 million away.
So it will be septic, so.
That's a long way. Commissioners, comments?
I just have one comment, and that is, is that I've got to support the recommendation of the staff, because you worked on a comprehensive plan for three years, and it was designed to have urban reserve places, and we don't need to keep extending it out, because there might be a line to the south, there's no sewer. I'm concerned about the density, because you add in a whole 150 acres, and you have 150 units, but half of it's not being developed, so you have those small lots, lots of runoff, even though you may take care of the flooding problem with some sort of damming. You've still got lots of rifts, lots of concrete, lots of streets that are going to just be pouring it down there. So I'm going to, I support the staff. I can't, I-
I have to say, I was a little surprised that this application went forward. We had considerable discussion of this matter and the appropriateness of developing this property as part of our consideration of their request for a plan amendment, which we denied. I mean, I understand Mr. Box thinks it was a mistake for it to be labeled as urban reserve, but, and he's certainly entitled to his opinion, but it was, you know, not something that was just decided willy-nilly. It was a considerable process of, process of deliberation and decision, and it is urban reserve. It seems to me that the argument is almost that, you know, the city doesn't have any right to have any urban reserves. You know, if you've got property, you're entitled to develop it, and I just don't think that that's accurate. This is property that has been determined to be appropriate, to be held, and I, I think that's what it ought to be kept. Given that, then I don't see any point, really, in proceeding even on with the application to rezone it. But here we are, so I, I can't support this. And if you are about to make a motion to deny it, I'll second it.
Is that motion?
Second.
Okay, motion to deny, which I think the applicant was looking for and expecting. So motion second to deny item 11. Cast your votes. And that is denied.
Item 12 and 13 were continued. Item 14 is PUD 1623 to rezone 12231 North Air Depot Boulevard from double A to PUD 1623.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, Brian Kuhn with Hewitt Zollers, representing the applicant. Also have Mr. Bloom with me here today, who is the owner of the property, the developer, and going to be one of the homeowners out there. This property is located out at northeast 122nd and Air Depot at the southwest corner. It is 10 acres. They purchased it several months ago in Oakdale School District. The comprehensive plan calls for two-acre lots. What we did and was looked at, okay, we could create five two-acre lots. It would be very plain Jane, have driveways on 122nd and on Air Depot. So we tried to come up with something different. We're doing two other of these similar, actually both of them in Edmond right now. And so we tried to get creative about, okay, five lots, five homes on 10 acres, equates to two-acre lots. So how do we, how can we make this more creative with still just five homes? Which I think, in my opinion, the lot size has a lot to do with your density of use of number of houses, but also has to do with size of lots. I understand that. But we can create the two-acre lots if we have to. I met with staff originally, because what I was going to do is to create longer lots that go like this, so I get two-acre lots. This area right here is what we know, and other engineers in the room would know, what we call the 1033 line. Anytime you're around Lake Arcadia, anything below the elevation of 1033, you cannot fill. And I'm not sure if that has some freeboard on the dam at Lake Arcadia, but if Lake Arcadia ever completely fills up, the water will back up to the elevation of 1033. So Corps of Engineers, many, many years ago, bought easements off of all the property owners that owned land within that 1033 line, said you can't build here, and I'm sure they paid for it, and that's okay if that's previous owners. So that line runs approximately right in here, right along the north side of our road and the north side of this lot, northeast side. There's an existing pond. This is heavily treed. If I go with the two-acre lots, like I said, and extend all these out, just long and skinny, I could do that and still stay out of the 1033 line. I could still build a private driveway, a private road, which would count into that, count into the common, or into the calculation of the lot sizes. But if these, if I own this lot and I extend it out to here, I can do whatever I want with those trees. I can't fill, I can't build my house, but I can do whatever I want with the trees. So we felt it was best, let's try to preserve this area. It's got a nice pond that they're going to clean up. Let's try to preserve that area. In the staff report, and in your comprehensive plan, it talks about two-acre lots. However, it says, and I quote, "with a decrease to one acre if the preservation of an environmentally sensitive area is included." And that's what we're trying to accomplish here. Because if this is commonly owned, it's a common area, Property Owners Association will maintain it and will regulate it, make sure no one gets down in there to build a volleyball court or whatever and remove a lot of the trees. So we're trying to save trees. Been very lucky to work on projects like this. I think it's an outside-of-the-box deal, but it could create a nice neighborhood. Again, only five homes. And I think that's, I think that's one of the reasons that we have these rules. I could go to one-acre lots, but I would make this a private street, and they really don't want it to be a gated neighborhood. They're not, they just don't feel like gated is the thing to do, so let's go with a public street. We're going to build it to the same standards, whether it's private or public, but they just said, we don't want it gated. Let's make it open, people could come in. They just, they just didn't want to do that. I can do that if we, if we have to go to one acre, which meets, which goes along with this point, this staff report comment. Again, these are three-quarter acre lots. Again, what I said earlier, four and a half acres of common space, so I think ultimately you have five homes on this site. I know there's some surrounding tracks. There's one home here that's on a five-acre tract, so one home here, you'll have two lots that are about it. But even if I went to the two-acre lots, you're still going to have two lots that are about this. So no change as far as what he would see outside of his property, you'd still have two homes. There are two lots over here, two five-acre tracts. The houses are pretty far west. I don't know if you have an aerial potentially we could look at. There's a big pipeline through here, so those homes are probably 400 feet away. So there will be three homes that face that. In the staff report, there's a couple staff, a couple TEs that I would like to address. Of course, the first one's the standard about engineering requirements. We will agree with those. One of the things, the ordinance requires that you have a 25-foot setback, and I was trying to read what that meant. Does that mean 25-foot side back for this house, or is it because you have, have the aerobic? We're okay with a 25-foot aerobic setback, so we don't have some aerobic within 25 feet of someone else's property line. This rule was also written in one of our committees many, many years ago in a rural area because of fire department. They want at least 50 foot of separation between structures. We will still maintain that. What we're asking for is if we could have a reduction to 10-foot side setbacks for the house, so that we can set the house on the lot where I think it appropriately needs to go. Again, though, 50 foot of separation between structures to meet the fire department's request. One of the things, and you'll see it in the preliminary plat, but I want to bring it up here too, is we agree to sprinkle all the homes that are in this neighborhood, because there's no fire protection. So we'll put in, we'll put in residential sprinkler system. One of the TEs, it's just minimum lot size should be two acres to ensure compatibility. I think, I'd like to look at it today, and I'm presenting to you today, that we're still looking at, we're looking at five homes total. I know the original PUD, when it was turned in, we had smaller lots, so we had, we put on there no minimum lot size. Well, I know there has to be a minimum lot size because of the, because of the state health department with aerobic and water wells. So I know they have to be at least three-quarter acre to meet that rule. So there's not really, the minimum lot size is really not probably a valid comment. I'm sure I probably put it in, and they just quoted me. So it's really not valid to say it that way. And then the fourth TE is that we should include some language regarding the preservation of trees, and we're absolutely, that's what we're about on this subdivision. So that's the zoning case. I don't know if you want me to talk about preliminary plat now or not, but I'd be glad to answer your questions if you'd like me to.
Are these houses going to be sprinkled?
Yes. Every one of them will have residential sprinkler system.
Good.
And their minimum of three, in their covenants, and you'll see it at the final plat stage, their covenants, houses will be a minimum of 3,000 square feet. So this is not like we're trying to cram a bunch of houses out there. Cost of the land would not allow us to do a small lot, small home subdivision. These are going to be large, nice homes. Like I said, Mr. Bloom is going to be one of the owners of one of the homes.
On preservation of the trees?
Yes.
That I understand on the area to the north of the road and by the pond, you're going to, but what do you anticipate doing on the purpose of your lots? Are you going to keep some sort of tree density in the yards?
Yes. On the final plat, the developer, who's also a builder, we're going to set building pads on those lots and say, you buy this lot, here's where you're going to build your house. So everywhere else will have to be, now, you can clear out underbrush, you know, anything that's dead.
Right.
But there may be some kind of regulation that we could put that anything over a certain size of a tree, if it's healthy, you know, you can't, can't take it out without approval of the homeowner association or something. The, I mean, trees are an amenity to us. So I mean, it's not like we're going to do that, but we will set, we will set building envelopes.
And will you have that language in the PUD? You'll have about what you're going to do?
We can put that in there. We can put that in there.
Well, the other comment that I had, and it was about the way you've designed the development, the five lots, and kind of it's analogous to the previous application, where it's 150 acres, I've got 150 houses, which half of it is not developable. We've dealt with this before. I like the creativity of it. I think, but then again, adjacent landowners, and you've said that you've talked with them or whatever, but I'd like to see if there's protests, Mr. Chairman, and see what they have to say.
Yes. One that's come up.
Can I, can I ask? So you would be okay with the addition of a fifth TE, that you'll maintain 25 feet of separation between the structures?
Yes. Fifty, it's actually 50 feet.
Fifty feet.
Yeah.
Fifty feet.
Okay.
And like I said, we'll show the building envelope on the final plat. These guys have already walked the property a lot. Like I said, the two owners are also going to build their own personal home out there. So they want it to be very nice. Now, one other thing, we could have brought the entrance in off of 122nd, brought it this way. There's a lower area right here that we have to cross. It's 1033 line, but it's not Corps of Engineer, it's not a FEMA flood zone. The FEMA flood zone is really up and towards the northern end, so we can cross this with a box culvert or whatever we want to do. We could have brought it in over here, but 122nd traffic is a lot heavier than Air Depot traffic, so we just felt it was best to bring it in over here. This neighborhood over here, just so you know, some of those lots are one acre. Shadow Lake, I think it is, or is that Shadow Ridge? Some of these lots are one-acre lots, so. And we can meet that one if we want to go to a private.
Questions? Any other questions for Brian? We do have somebody signed up to speak on this one, so we'll maybe get to that. Mr. Weddington, would you like to come up, sir?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Could you tell us?
My name's Charles Weddington. I live at 12121 North Air Depot Boulevard, Edmond, Oklahoma. I've been a resident there for 29 years. First of all, I'm disappointed that neither the developer owner or their representative has contacted me or any of the property owners on the radius report. I have provided the planning commissioners with written notice of opposition, representing 100% of the common boundary property owners, and one property owner in addition who is not a common boundary property owner. The common boundary properties are all five-acre tracts. They are legacy. The average resident has lived there for more than 26 years. They are all in opposition to the density of this development and to the potential damage and destruction of the upland forest. We've not had the opportunity to fully analyze the proposed unit development, however. In speaking with a couple of professionals briefly, we've come up with grave concerns that we believe should be compelling to deny this application. When I spoke with the engineer, Mr. Kuhn, as he sought me out when I arrived, I mean, he basically said, well, we can plat it for two acres, and then it'll be slash and burn. There'll be no preservation of the woodlands. And to me, that just seems to be a threat. And I don't believe that the responsible bodies would allow, government would allow that to occur. I requested to deny this proposal, and if you cannot find it within your decision today to deny it, I respectfully request that it be deferred, so that we may retain counsel and experts to provide opinions and fully analyze and understand the consequences and the impact of this development on our neighborhood and the environment. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Weddington before he steps away?
You said that you're speaking for all of the residents?
Yes, sir. I've, I've met with and spoken with all the people who've signed the document that you provided. I had at least 30 minutes of discussion with each of those people.
Okay.
And they're universally opposed to the development of this 10-acre PUD as currently proposed. I mean, for, to say that, oh, we've got 10 acres, we're only going to build five houses, that means an average of two acres density for residents. It's like me saying, you know, I've got a group here, on average, they're middle-aged. Well, if that group is a 99-year-old and a one-year-old, indeed, their average age is 50, and they would be middle-aged, but that would not be an accurate representation of the group. And to have this density, this would be the highest density development, I believe, in a four-square-mile area. Perhaps a larger than four-square-mile area. Just trying to study that presently. All right. Any other questions in that group? No. Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, nobody else has signed up. Discussion on this one?
This, this particular development, I think, is, is a bit of a challenge coming from the area that it is located. I think some consideration, though, even though it is what it is, I think they have done a good job in terms of what is, what would be allowed with the, with the trees and the pond and all of that, in terms of the development, to try to do the best job they could with that. It seems to me, though, some communication was missing between the residents and the developer, that probably should have transpired and maybe should even today go on between those residents who have been in that area for the last 20-plus years, and the developer who is developing right in their backyard, so to speak, that, that at least that communication needs to happen so that those residents understand exactly what's going on. needs to happen so that those residents understand exactly what's going on. But even when we live in a place for 20-plus years, we know that that's going to change, and we know that it's going to have some, some changes.
Yes, sir.
I think that it really would make really good sense for them to have some discussion and then come back after that discussion.
No, I think it's always a good idea, and, and if the developer would be willing to take two weeks and take a chance and opportunity to meet with the residents in the area, I think that would be a really good idea.
We don't, we don't have a problem with that. I think I want to know what we're trying to accomplish, because if they want us to accomplish five acre tracts, that's probably not going to work. But we'll take the two weeks. What I'd ask to do, just because of some contractual terms, if we cannot move the council date on further, just move planning commission, we're fine with that. That doesn't cost us any time at all, and we'll meet with them. If I could get a copy, Cindy, of the list of the protesters, you know, we'll contact them, because the list is pretty, the ownership list is pretty big because of the neighborhood. Like I said, to the east is one acre lots, so.
Actually, there are only 12.
Okay.
Individuals or entities on the radius of contact.
Okay. If I can have that list, that's fine.
One of those is Corv engineers, one of those is the developer.
Okay. Well, we will, we'll notify them, and we'll have a meeting, hopefully, next week, sometimes towards the end of the next week. So two weeks continuous is fine.
Is, is that a possible thing to do, to, to take two weeks for us and not move council date? That's okay? Okay.
Brian?
Yes.
One thing, we've been having, especially southeast, problems with rural standard roads. You know, rural standard roads was set up, I think, before dump trucks and garbage trucks and stuff like that were. I'd like for you to consider a concrete rollover street, rollover curves. And I know, having developed, I know it's a little bit more expensive. But if this is going to be a public street, I think we need to have that kind of street in our, even in rural areas. And the last two or three that we've done in the southeast, they've been private, but they're concrete with rollover curves.
Okay.
So consider that.
We will consider it. You know, the thing is, even, even private streets have to be up to city standards, and it's more of a base issue than anything else, and I think if the developer gets both, putting in a cheap base, I don't know what he puts on top. We've done a lot of rural roads that have lasted a long time, and if you build them right, they'll last, and that's why the city standard requires it. I'm not sure about the curb and gutter, because then you create more storm sewer. Is that, you know, is that really environmentally what you're wanting to do too? But we'll look at it. We will look at it. Because like I said, they're going to live there.
I live in a subdivision that has the, the rural road, and it's as good as a pavement, I mean, a concrete road. But I think, overall, that, you know, and especially in this area, where you've got a lot of sand and stuff like that, I think it needs to be different.
We'll look at it. We'll look at it.
Brian, my hope and my desire is that you all will be able to come together and for them to see the rationale for what is being proposed, and then perhaps incorporate some ideas that the residents may have to make this project even better. And so I think all of that just needs to be taken under consideration.
Yes, sir.
That's my hope and desire.
Yes, sir.
If two weeks is good, I'll move for continuance for two weeks.
Second.
No question in a second to continue items 14 and 15.
What date will that be?
October the...
Two weeks is.
No, wait a minute. I think it'd be eighth. I can't remember.
Eighth is the second Thursday.
I think that is right.
I think that's right. October? You're jumping ahead a month. I think it's October the eighth.
Yes, next month.
Two weeks.
Thank you.
Cast your votes. It's the 13th, Brian.
13th?
Yeah.
So don't show up on that.
You get us a... Thank you, Mr. Box.
You're welcome.
Item 16 is PC 10462 to rezone 2225 South Sarah Road from AA to R1.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, Tim Johnson, also with me, the civil engineer on the project. Perhaps we start this conversation with comp plan. Here, we are ULI. What we propose is a R1 development, fully compliant with the urban low intensity designation that we currently have. What we have is a application that may look familiar. There was another developer that came with an application on this exact site some months ago. The difference between that application and this is the design. The previous applicant had a very rigid, long streets, squared off, no curvature, and not the centralized common area like the planning commission desires. What we propose to do is, we've been able to acquire a portion down here that was previously not part of the development plan, that allows us to create the curved streets. Additionally, we break this up right here in the northern portion so that you don't have the long straight stretch like the folks who live north of us have. We did meet with the neighbors, and I believe some of them are here and will tell you, the biggest problem they have in their neighborhood is this quarter-mile-long southwest 21st Street that operates as a speedway. The house we met at actually had, on the side of their trash cans, painted "Slow Down." So you can imagine that that becomes a speedway. So seeking to avoid that type of design problem, we have what you have here. What we also have, and what we continue to talk about in this part of the city, is a major change, a major dynamic shift, and that being the turnpike. Here, the turnpike's going to actually clip our southwest corner of the property. And so when we look at what we propose now, what we have is an R1 application that abuts R1, that abuts a turnpike, and abuts multifamily residential to the east. So in a pure land use analogy, I would submit that R1 single-family zoning is certainly appropriate. In fact, it will probably serve as a wonderful buffer to the existing neighborhood to that turnpike. One thing that the turnpike is going to have in this stretch of the city is service roads. What that means is, there's been an encouragement to have some form of retail or commercial. Well, that's probably a worse scenario for the neighbors than single-family development. The concern that we heard from the neighbors was Sarah Road. It's a two-lane road. There was some patchwork out there when, when we were out there. One of the things that this commission is aware of, that we, there was great lengths to get an impact fee ordinance in place. So perhaps Sarah Road needs widening. One of the best ways to ensure that that could happen is a development. Every single home, based on whatever the square footage of that home is, is going to have to pay into a fund that will be available to go fix Sarah Road. Without it, the only other option perhaps would be get it added to the, to the bond list. Perhaps that's still an option. But without any development, there's no additional money in the coffers to go do a project like this. It was always my understanding that when that impact fee ordinance went into place, it would help resolve a lot of the discussion we have here about traffic concerns, because that's why we're passionate, to have money in the coffers to go fix specific problems. And perhaps that's what we have here, is a situation where Sarah needs to be widened. We're certainly willing to help our neighbors to the north in any way we can to help them try to get that pushed on the bond list. The only other concern that we heard was connecting to their stubb street. They actually have a stubbed-out street on the far western side of the property, which we obviously made the connection to. We only have space for the one access point, because we're going to leave this common area natural. So keeping with the policies of the planning commission to promote connectivity, we do connect there, and I think there was some concern that perhaps some people would actually use the connection. But again, that's the policy, that's the goal of the planning commission, to provide that connection so that we have interworked neighborhoods. With that, we do agree with your staff's recommendation of approval, and we would ask for the same.
Any questions for Mr. Box, commissioners? We have somebody like to speak to us on this?
I have a question, but it's not for Mr. Box. Or maybe it is. The staff report says on page six, the developer will be responsible for any failure of domestic and fire protection systems, which require water pressure in excess of 25 PSI. And my question is, what does that mean exactly?
I've got my civil engineer here. Sounds like a question for him.
Are we talking about moral and ethical responsibility, or are we talking about...
I think we need to have your representative from utilities answer that.
I'm, yes, I'm curious. So if there's somebody back there who wants to come and explain what that means, I'd love to hear it.
Here they are.
Yes, Nathan Manwold, Utilities Department. That's a standard comment we put on our reports, we're required to provide 25 PSI. If for some reason, like, a development needs higher pressures, then they would be responsible for increasing the pressure. There's no, no reason that we see that homes will need to boost pressure for fire systems or domestic service in this location.
What they're responsible for is requiring higher PSI if it's needed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry about that.
Ms. Compton, would you like to come up, please?
My name is Sherry Compton, and I live at 20608 Southwest 21st Street in Yukon, which is Mustang Creek Edition, which is next to this development request. I have a short video that I've made, and Cindy downloaded it. Let's see if we can see it. That's, my husband and I are in our pickup. We're headed west on Southwest 29th, and we're going to Sarah Road. And it's at 5:38, gosh, I thought you could see more than that, in the afternoon. It's on a Tuesday afternoon. We're just going to show you a little bit of what is going on on Sarah Road.
Do you have a soundtrack? No, I'm just kidding.
No. For once, I didn't talk. All right. That's Sarah Road, right there that we're approaching. We're on Southwest 29th. And there's Sarah. That is from 29th to 15th north. It is bumper to bumper, waiting to get through that four-way stop. For us to get in our neighborhood, somebody had to stop and let us turn in. This is not an exception. This is pretty much every afternoon at this time on Sarah Road right now. The fact that Sarah Road fails every traffic study that's done, and that's been an established fact from before, when we talked with the other developer and they were trying to get this through. There's not much you can do. A new housing addition has already been approved in Westbury, which is right across the street to the west, the east of us. It's my understanding that one of their exits is going to be Southwest 21st Street onto, onto Sarah Road. So let's think about, I think there's going to be 200 homes over there. I can't say that for a fact. So we've got traffic coming from there, and God bless those turnpike people. Now, they're going to put in a full exit, I think probably around 25th, 26th, south of us on Sarah Road. Originally, that was a half-exit. Now the plans have changed, and they're going to put a full exit, which is going to dump all that traffic on Sarah Road. I know that Sarah Road is, is really not, I don't know how to say this, it's not your responsibility as a planning commission. But everybody we talked to kind of says, well, you know, it needs to come up for a bond issue. It sure does. But with all this addition happening, and all these homes being approved to be built, and I have to give the new developer kudos, because his new plan is improved from what we had before, and they're proposing 151 homes instead of 220, which is a nice cut down. But granted, that's another 300 cars that are going to dump out on Sarah Road. And we're going to talk about this, too, with the developers. They've met with my HOA board, and, and there's some things we'd like changed, and we'll try to work with that. We're not opposed to, to progress in our area. We're not opposed to development. We know something is going to go in that little piece of prime area right there. What we would like to see is the city to take some responsibility and, and increase and better the infrastructure on that road before they approve anything else to dump out on there. It's a nightmare right now, and it's only going to get worse for us. Thank you for your time.
How far is just the entrance that you turned into from the stop sign that you turned right at? I mean...
Well, it's on 21st, so it's eight blocks.
Okay.
It'd be eight blocks, because I live on 21st, and that was the corner of 29th. But that's every afternoon.
And morning, same thing?
Morning, same thing. And we've got that new school south of us, just south of 29th, and they put that in and didn't even put a turn lane in. It, it's, it's really crazy right out there right now. So we're looking at, you know, the turnpike going in and that sort of thing, and it's just going to be crazy, especially with them putting a full exit right there just south of us, and it's going to be south of these folks at that development, too. So it's just going to combine and congest that even worse. We, that needs to be a four-lane, or at least a three-lane with an inside turn lane and a stoplight on 29th.
What was the time that you took that video?
5:38 in the afternoon.
Is it the same way going north in the morning?
We were going, we were coming from the east going west, and we were going...
But in the morning, is it the same way going?
It's the other way, yeah. You, you plan everything, every time you leave your house. I don't work anymore, I'm retired, but if I need to go to the store, or I need to do something else, my time has got to be planned, and I pick when I go to Walmart. Trust me, because you can't...
We could charge people for parking on Sarah Road.
We could. We absolutely could.
Kind of get some tip money, right? And so what time do you leave, just out of curiosity? Not that I'm...
I don't, because I don't work anymore.
Well, that's good.
I'm retired.
But were you two, I mean, like, when you plan your daily trips during the day, do you leave at 10 o'clock to go and come back by 3?
9:30.
Is it like driving in Dallas?
Yeah.
You know, you're home by 4?
Absolutely.
Try to get off the road by 4?
Yeah, because there's a school C right north of us on 15th. There's two schools over there, and you can't even get to the turnpike at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, coming from the east, because the traffic's backed up for us. It's the school kids to get picked up. Nobody rides the bus anymore, even though there's buses out there. I guess parents don't trust the bus, but...
Thank you for that presentation.
You're welcome.
Any questions, more questions of Ms. Compton? Tim, what do you have to say?
Lots of good things, but I won't go there. She's exactly correct. I mean, we've, we've participated in four or five different traffic studies for developments in the four-mile radius area here. Sarah Road, 29th, Sarah Road, 44th, with the school traffic, they have typically failed at peak hour, and they're a four-way stop. It needs to be improved. There's no question about it. As our former councilman Ward 8 can attest, because of all the bond issue work done in his ward as a result of the '07 bond issue, many of those developments were already in play or under development before any of those streets were improved to four-lane that they're doing. I've talked to the public works director, and they're putting together their list. It's not been public yet, so we don't know if Sarah's on there or not. Obviously, Councilman McAtee can help encourage getting that road on there, which would be a great help for them and all the other developments in the area. Traffic commission? No, we haven't made a presentation to the traffic commission yet. There's not any funds to build a signal there. Otherwise, we could. It certainly meets the criteria to have a signal there, but there's not, there's not funding available for that through the city at this time. That's what David mentioned, you know, this whole discussion we've always had about traffic issues, who pays for what. That's why you all have implemented the traffic impact fees. For Sarah Road, it's a little late. You know, it'd have been nice 10 years ago. But I think the, the story being told here is that this is definitely a needed road for improvement. Public Works Director said that they are going to be looking at to stretch the dollar in some of these rural areas where there's no commercial. They may go to a three-lane road with a center turn lane for the residents, because the two-lane criteria is still the same. It's around 9,000 to 10,000 cars per day. I doubt that Sarah Road reaches that yet. It just has a high peak capacity right now. And so that's really what triggers you from two-lane to four-lane, is that number of trips per day ADT. So that's my two cents.
What's your timeline on the development? Tim, full build?
It'll be, they'll probably do it in two phases, and it'll be a full year before we ever see a first house come out of the ground.
Thank you.
Tim, do you have any traffic count on that road at all?
I didn't bring them with me, but we have done counts on that road. The ADT is less than the 10,000 number. It's actually 9,000, it's a change. It's actually 9,000, it's a change. But the intersection is the problem. It's, excuse me, the delay at the four-way stop is what triggers the F for that intersection. It's the amount of delay time.
And would there be a commitment, perhaps, on your client's part to fund that signalization at the intersection?
Well, I mean, that was the whole point of the impact fee, is to get at it.
Well, we've talked about impact fees. That's not an F.
Well, here what you have is not only our development, but the planning commission and council, when you see PUD 1591, it's a high-density, it's a multifamily element, residential. So there's going to be a much bigger pool of money than just, you know, in a vacuum, this development.
But my question was, fund the intersection signalization. Your client, the developer of this...
I don't think that's reasonable, because if it's already at an F now, why...
Well, but, I mean, obviously, the video is pretty effective, and we've talked about Sarah Road around this commission for several years now about how limited it is. And even though I like your, I like the plan, but, boy, if it's not there, you know, you're just adding fuel to the fire without any, without anything in front of you that's going to fix it.
Which is why that, this discussion is the exact reason we have the impact fee, so that we didn't have individual developers doing the traffic studies and saying, who's going to pay for it, with the developer saying, well, gosh, I just happen to be the last guy here, so now I have to bear the burden? Rather, the equitable way, which is why this commission recommended approval, and the council approved it, was let's tax every single house that gets built to have money that can go directly to fix currently existing problems or problems we foresee on the horizon based upon increased development. But this was the exact discussion that took years to get to.
Well, no, no, and the impact fees are part of the comprehensive plan, you know, et cetera. But as you well know, the impact fees that have been adopted are half of what was a minimum impact fees. In other words, it's not an F. It's not an F. I mean, you'll be collecting, you start, you know, spade of dirt in a year, and then all of a sudden, this stuff going on. Nothing's happening on Sarah Road. There's no bond issue. Is that right?
The bond issue list hasn't been finalized. That's our point, is...
But that's, that's, how many years does it take to fund the, you know, sell the bonds, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? There's a premature aspect of this that we've, that's concerning me, and has concerned me for a long time. If it's not there, then don't do it. Don't add this to a problem that has no plan to be fixed. You have a concept. Tax every house, tax every house, tax every house. That's years and years and years and years. In the meantime, you build 50 houses in there. That's 100 cars that add to the rest of the stuff, and Sarah Road is impassable.
Two points. If it wasn't ready, it would strike me that the comprehensive plan, which we've talked about at length today, wouldn't have said ULI. It would have said reserve.
Well, I understand. I agree. No, I agree.
So if the comprehensive plan...
But you don't have a street.
Well, and so to that point, PUD 1591, which was recommended for approval by this body, approved by the city council, is significantly denser than this. It is multifamily residential, not single-family. And yet, this discussion wasn't here.
Did I look for that?
I believe you did. I believe that it is unanimous at this planning commission. So it's hard for my client to see we've conformed to the comp plan, much higher-density residential gets approved, yet now a single-family next, a single-family next to a turnpike becomes the problem. I mean, I don't see how that can comport with the comp plan and all the discussions.
I'd like to see a more specific resolution of the intersection problem. You know, what it cost? What do, what do it cost to signalize that intersection and to make it not backed up forever? What is it, what's the price?
If they didn't channelize it, it would be over $100,000. If you channelized it and made it full left turns and everything...
Yeah.
It'd approach $160,000, $175,000.
They moved to the Traffic Commission, and Traffic Commission approved. They have no money in the Traffic Commission.
No, it did not. We didn't...
Well, if it did...
Right.
If they did take it to the Traffic Commission, the council would feel some obligation to, in the bond issue, to fund those traffic signals. So I think that would be a step in the right direction, if they got the Traffic Commission to look at it, get it approved.
We're willing to take it to the Traffic Commission, because I think it warrants.
I think there is incentive by the council to approve those projects that have been approved by the...
Would you be willing to take it to the next...
Tim and I could go and take that application to the Traffic Commission that wouldn't...
Tim, have you done any estimates on absorption rate? Is there any, do you have any feel for that?
Typically, it's about 30 to 40 houses a year.
And, okay.
Okay, commissioners, I think we've talked about the traffic issue all we can, and I don't know that there's a lot we can do about it. All right? So let's move, let's do what we can do, and that's vote on this application.
But the number 160, 175 rolls around in my head, is that all it would take to signalize that intersection?
It's not my money, so I'm not going to say it's all it can take. So, I mean, you know, it may be a lot of money to me.
There's a way to do that.
It would be an incentive for the council to go ahead and put it on the bond issue list.
And just get it done.
Excuse me, but, let's back up here. Commissioner Ryan said it right. It would be incumbent upon the council, not the planning commission. So let's make a decision on the land use. That's what our job is, all right? And I'm sympathetic, I deeply am sympathetic to the traffic issues out there, but let's get a vote here. Our motion to vote on...
I, you know, totally agree. Sarah Road's a mess. We ought to be looking under rocks for money to do stuff like this. I mean, whatever we can do to alleviate these issues. I can't see that this particular developer or the owner of this particular piece of property holds the magic key to that giant problem. I think that it is a good design. I think it is supported by the comp plan. I think a staff report is recommending approval, and so I'm going to move approval.
Second. Motion is second to approve item 16.
Would I like to make a comment before the vote?
Okay. Now make it quick.
And that is to the, to the neighbors to the north that came up here to speak in your video, doesn't this now go to council?
Yeah.
Isn't that right?
It's a rezoning application.
Yeah. Doesn't it go up there? So this is it?
Oh, that's right. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
Yeah, this goes to council.
It goes to council. And this is where you argue as hard as you can for that intersection to be signalized and let that message be told. Show your video. Show what's going on, because for 170,000 bucks, if you can fix some of it today, this is like within a year, before all this stuff happens, you're going to be so much better off. So this goes to council. Be sure you go there and do your video and talk your best. Okay?
Okay. Motion is second to approve item number 16. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's approved. Ms. Compton, thank you for coming down. I encourage you, as Commissioner Bright did. Thank you very much.
The rest of the items have been continued.
Communications and reports, planning commission committees. Members?
One comment.
Yes.
Just, you know, what's the progress of implementing the requirements of the comprehensive plan? And I could see something going on pretty quickly on some, you know, the issue of where do you locate the common areas, et cetera. And I would like to see something happen with subregs first that would go into compliance with the plan, and then following that with ordinances that will implement other requirements of the plan. I know the staff has worked hard, limited, et cetera, but we can go through 100 applications. I still have the same comment. Commissioner Hansley said, well, it's not the rule.
It's not.
I'd like for it to be the rule.
But that is our strategy. That is our strategy, and we're moving forward with that.
Okay, good. I would like to see us, and I'm not, I don't want to put a burden on the staff, but I'd like to see us do some work on our rural road requirements. And I think we went through this once before, and I think we just kind of slid it aside. But I think it's something that we really need to take a look at. And, you know, some of them are good, some of them are terrible, but it's something that I think we really need to reevaluate.
I'm sorry, what, Commissioner Allen?
Well, the quality of the road. You know, I mean, you know, if I'm not mistaken, it's so much gravel, so much sand, so much blacktop. And you don't have any curb, you don't have any gutter, you don't have any, it's all actually bar ditches and stuff. And it either do more with the blacktop or do blacktop and curb and gutter to hold the streets together, maybe.
So look at it in terms of whether we ought to upgrade our standards, you mean?
Yes, yes. Probably three, four, or five years ago, we talked about it, and we kind of let it slide to the wayside.
Okay, Commissioner...
We've got some places in the southeast that the cities had to go back in on new developments and repave the streets.
Before we move to item number 10, commissioners, I have to leave in just a moment, but I thought while we were, we might revisit the receiving of the minutes since Commissioner Ryan is here now. So the minutes from the meeting of September the 8th.
I move. There you go. You're just voting to receive them, not whether, not they, what they say.
Yeah, I'll vote for them. Okay. And I believe at this time, we have a presentation regarding Plan OKC.
We do. This is our annual implementation report. When we adopted the Conference of Plan last summer, we said that we would come back once a year, give you an evaluation of the progress of the implementation of the plan. So I've asked some of our planning department staff to attend the meeting today. This is not all of our staff members. We have about 50-something people on staff. Every person in the planning department does touch the plan and help implement it every day with the work they do. But these are some staff members who directly are managing programs and implementing things. And if I could just have this staff stand and acknowledge it, and if we could get a wide shot, maybe, to show some of these staff, they are an exceptional staff. We hear it every day when we bump into people, go to conferences, and I'm so proud of the work they do, and they work really hard, and they're very passionate about their work. So I thought maybe we could acknowledge that.
Thank you very much.
They will be around to answer any questions that you might have, and I'm just going to run through, if I can get the presentation to work, four things in this presentation. First, we want to give you an update on the policies that we have in the comp plan and the implementation progress. Also, just a perspective on development activity that's happened over the last year, some of the projects that we have completed over the last year, and some that we have actively that we are working on. So first is the overall number of policies at the Conference of Plan. We have 310 policies, and we've categorized these into two different types of policies. There's programs and procedures that we implement every day, like to aid our decision-making processes to look at applications and at planning commission. Some of these might be partnerships or specific types of projects and programs for development review. The other type of policy is a proposed action that we're going to take to do something different, to develop an ordinance, to make changes.
You recommend?
To make, these are all recommendations to do something. It's to make an action happen. So 141 of those types of recommendations. And so far, 106 of our program and procedure policies are currently in progress, applying them every day. 80 of those projects and recommended actions are in progress right now. So a good chunk of our total policies, we are working on and touching of the overall comprehensive plan. Looking at development activity over the past year, this is looking from July to July. This map is kind of a heat map, and the green areas are where development activity has occurred by square foot. And if we want to break this down a little bit further and talk about where this development has happened, this bar chart is a percent of all the square footage of development by our land use typology areas. So the green development, which is about 10% historically since, well, over the past five years since 2009, it's about 10% of the development happens in rural areas. The majority of the development, of course, happens in those areas that we've defined as urban low intensity. The urban medium intensity is the lighter brown, and then the darkest brown is combining our urban high intensity and downtown areas. So if you want to get a perspective about what we're trying to do with the comprehensive plan, is to take advantage of all of those areas in Oklahoma City that currently have the infrastructure that's needed to support urban levels of service inside the tan and the brown and the dark brown areas, and increase that efficiency of development by doing infill lots, doing increased densities in our urban medium and urban high-intensity areas. And that is a difficult task to do. It takes a lot of incentives and programs and collaboration and creativity. One of our goals, though, is to increase the amount of development inside the inner loop, which is that inner ring of interstate, which is kind of the two dark colors of brown. If you combine those two dark colors of brown for the urbanized areas, it's roughly the inner loop. And you can see, there's a little bit of flexibility in ups and downs in that market over time. That's been kind of the trend over the past 20 years. Some years, we have a lot of infill development or apartment complexes being built, higher-density developments increasing that number. And that's reflected here. So overall, we're seeing that our development activity is picking up. And the next slide, I'm going to go in the wrong direction here. The next slide is showing just housing units inside the inner loop. And over the past 10 years or so, we can see that the trend of increasing dwelling units inside that urbanized area of Oklahoma City is going up about half a percent every year consistently. And we are seeing changes and trends in trying to increase those densities in our urban, most urban areas with multifamily development. And we're going to continue to track this and report back to you every year, since this is our first year looking back at the comp plan. It's kind of nice to have a baseline. And we'll continue to hopefully report that our efficiencies of development, our mixes of land uses are continuing to happen on a positive track. Development review is a function that's real important to us, and it feeds into the process that you're here doing every day. In 2016, we reviewed 153 zoning applications, and we do measure how many of the zoning applications we recommend to council are also agreed upon by council. The decision, or the recommendation that Planning Commission makes is consistent with the decision that council makes. 98% of Planning Commission's recommendations are the same as the council approval. So I think that's a very good percentage of being solid in our recommendations of conformance with the comp plan. Over the past year, we have also considered several comprehensive plan amendments, which we, we want this to be a flexible document that is responding to the conditions that are changing as our city grows and develops. Six of those applications that we did approve for the, for a comp plan amendment were in the urban low-intensity areas. Five were approved. One was from heavy industrial to urban low. Three were from urban reserve to urban low, and one was from open space. So we believe that this process of carefully scrutinizing whether or not that land use needs to change is working. We give a lot of good background and information about these comprehensive plan amendments to the Planning Commission, and we continue to review these. And I'm not sure if we will continue to see the same amount of comp plan amendments from year to year or not, but I think it's a very healthy process. On projects that we've completed... On projects that we've completed over the last year, I'd like to highlight a few. Of course, we mentioned the development impact fees today. This was an important step in trying to make sure that our urban service levels really do meet the urban standards that we want to commit to providing to our community. The traffic issue and the roadway issue has always been a challenge for us to keep up. It's a chicken and an egg thing. These development impact fees were adopted last April, and as we discussed earlier with some of our cases, what it does is it establishes fees paid by new development to help offset the costs that that new development is going to put on the infrastructure. For example, the road system, it's paying a portion of the cost to help make the improvements required for what traffic is going to be generated by that new development. And I want to clarify that the impact fees are not used to correct deficiencies that exist today. It's meant to provide funding for improving things that are yet to come. It also has a portion of an impact fee that goes towards parks. And this, what it does is it offsets some of the money that would have been expected to be funded through the general obligation bond, so that those general obligation bond dollars can be applied towards maintenance of our existing infrastructure. The Downtown Development Framework Plan was adopted soon after the Comprehensive Plan was adopted. This plan really helps to guide future development of downtown in a lot more detail than the Comprehensive Plan had. And right now, this plan is being used to help update our downtown district ordinances to conform with the plan. The Arts Master Plan was also another big accomplishment that was adopted in December of 2015. This plan is a guide that's being implemented through the Arts Commission's actions, and our Arts Liaison is working with individuals in the community to implement this plan. It also establishes new procedures for how the 1% for arts funds and the GeoBond and MAPS projects should be done to help streamline that process. Our Commercial District Revitalization Program, which has been in effect for many years, had some major and significant things happen in 2015, 2016. In the last year, we launched the Small Business Loan Program with the city. This really helps to focus some additional resources in areas that the Comprehensive Plan has defined as our strategic retail investment corridors and nodes. We've also seen more interest, growing interest of commercial districts becoming a part of the CDRP program. In the last year, five new districts have approached the city, and we'd be working with them on perhaps getting up to 17 areas that we're working on. We also were able to successfully establish a new business improvement district for the Adventure District area. And all of these districts that you see the logos for on this map have had events happen that bring the community together, that help reestablish that activity and that energy that just feeds the businesses and the success of these programs. So overall, we're seeing a lot of good energy and good trajectory in our commercial districts. The Office of Sustainability, which is now part of our Planning Department, has been working on several things. They received an air quality awareness grant, and this has funded the installation of bicycle and pedestrian improvements in several of our districts, including Plaza, Uptown 23rd, the Paseo, Midtown, Film Row, the Windsor District, and Capitol Hill. 80 bike racks and four repair stations, as well as two improvements to crosswalks and a solar-powered flashing pedestrian sign to help people get into these districts and be safer riding their bikes have been funded through this grant. Also, a report was completed called Climate and the Heartland Report, and this is something that five different cities in the Great Plains States collaborated on in partnership together. It was funded through a grant from the Urban Sustainability Directors Network, and the data in this report is helping us to apply for and receive future grant applications and help us shape some of our policy documents, like the Sustainability Plan that's currently in progress, and make recommendations that can include, be included in the city's Hazard Mitigation Plan. So a lot of good information went into that. And these are the things that we're currently working on. Of course, we've mentioned this. This is a really big project, probably one of the most transformative things that we can do to our city right now, is to align our ordinances and subdivision regs with the recommendations for what we want to achieve through the Comprehensive Plan. We have selected and are getting ready to go to council to negotiate with a consultant to start our process. I think maybe we're past that step. Are we past that step, Sarah? They're going to council, okay. This consultant is going to first, in the first phase, do a diagnostic of our city codes to identify those places in our codes that could be updated and try to make a recommendation for a strategy of how to eat the elephant one bite at a time. And we do acknowledge that, Bob, the subdivision regulations are going to be the first phase coming out of that, is looking at that immediately and then looking at the picture of the whole code update process. This is going to be a multi-year process, but we do want to tackle subregs as quickly as we can because we know that that might be an easier piece of the overall puzzle.
I can't hear you.
On the initial plan, you got a lot of input from the public. Are you going to try to do that same thing again?
Yes.
As these revisions come out?
Yes, absolutely. So this consultant in doing this first phase about the strategy is also going to help us define the steps for public engagement, stakeholder feedback, interviews about what's working, what's not. That will include the people that work every day with our codes and ordinances. We're going to have groups of people that help us decide what's best for Oklahoma City, using best practices and using examples from other communities, of course, as a basis for that. We are real excited about this. We're going to be having some meetings on it soon, and we really think this is going to be, you know, a great process. The other updates to ordinances that we're making based on the Downtown Development Framework Plan are affecting Bricktown. Bricktown actually just went into effect, so Bricktown ordinance update is now effective. The next segments that we're working on to implement Downtown Development Framework include reconfiguring downtown design districts so that we can start to talk about character sub-districts within downtown. Right now, the downtown districts just have three zoning districts, and they are not distinct as to what type of development happens, densities, heights, things like that. So using the Downtown Development Framework as a guide, we're beginning that process, and we've been having meetings focusing on the Cottage District area first, and we'll be working on the rest of the downtown in the coming year. We're also looking at our urban design districts, which, as you know, have a completely different character from each other. Asian District has a different character from Capitol Hill. So we're working on customizing that urban design district using the format for the Downtown Development Framework as a guide. And you will be seeing recommendations to establish two new districts, one for the Lincoln Boulevard overlay and one for traditional neighborhoods overlay. Those are currently under development. We've been working closely with our stakeholders on those. And we have also been doing area plans. These first two area plans are getting close to being completed for West 10th and the Windsor Districts, and you will see future area plans come out of Plan OKC, but these first two really organized the plan around creating place and what that means and what it would require to create better connections in our community, revitalization, redevelopment, the transportation system, and a sense of community. The Sustainability Plan is also the city's first holistic sustainability plan, has been under development. It really kicked off a very robust stakeholder process this last summer, and we are anticipating that you'll be seeing a draft Sustainability Plan coming to you in spring. The city's first historic preservation plan also has kicked off in spring. We anticipate that that plan will be complete in summer. All of these, all of these plans that we're developing are recommendations from Plan OKC, and all of them include a very significant public participation process. And then the next one is a bicycle transportation plan. This is our first comprehensive bicycle and pedestrian master plan for the city. This updates the Trails Master Plan. It has had a lot of good community engagement. It's looking at opportunities that maybe could be carried forward through the next general obligation bond issue and trying to get a very comprehensive approach to looking at where bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure are going to be most used and most needed. And Watch For Me Oklahoma City, Watch For Me OKC, is a program that we've initiated, funded by a Federal Highway Administration Safety Grant. It's a campaign that looks at education, promotion, and implementation. Because as we know, as our city is growing and building our bicycle infrastructure, part of it is how people understand their roles to be as drivers or as bicyclists. So that does require an education component. You might have noticed some of the campaign stickers on our city buses, the Watch For Me OKC sticker, and I think Mayor Cornet has also done some great promotional ads for that. As part of that, we're trying to demonstrate what it means to have thorough bicycle infrastructure, and we have funding through this to do our first protected bicycle lanes, which are going to happen in downtown, creating a loop. It also encourages the Spokeys system to tie into that. So we are extremely excited about implementing our bike system through the funding that was obtained through this grant and putting more bicycle infrastructure out into the neighborhoods that connect to the downtown area as future funds become available. Another thing that we're trying to emphasize is tying some threads together that are already in the Comprehensive Plans to define what livable streets principles mean. Livable streets is a concept that ensures that we consider the functionality of the roadway and the land uses behind it, decided for all modes of transportation to be considered so that people can have access to that infrastructure that they need to get where they want to go. So as we look at planning and investing in future improvements through our roadway system, we want to be able to have a list of questions and recommendations for priorities for how we spend those funds and what those streets could accommodate if you were to make improvements to them in terms of number of lanes, if on-street parking would be appropriate, if bicycle lanes could be accommodated. So with the combination of BikeWalk OKC being a guiding plan, looking at opportunities, and with a concept about thinking about streets as being livable, the Comprehensive Plan really does help to guide those future investments and decisions. We're also continuing to work on urban redevelopment initiatives, and we have established a few new TIF districts over the last year, one to help in the northeast Renaissance area of Oklahoma City. This is to help implement the Urban Renewal Plan in northeast Oklahoma City, another for the First National Center, and another was established for the Quartershore Reinvestment Area. The Quartershore Reinvestment Area is the map that you see in the top right corner, and this was really something that the Downtown Development Framework was utilized to help foresee and predict what the potential was for downtown so that TIF incentives and other types of incentives could be applied to get what we would like to see happen down there. Northwest 10th Street Corridor is also something that we have been trying to get redeveloped for a while. We do have a proposal in to develop some multifamily along 10th Street, and we are excited to see what the next steps are for that. Of course, we always work on neighborhood revitalization. We have a dedicated program in the Planning Department. Our Housing and Community Development Division touches neighborhood revitalization in many ways. One of the things I think we should highlight, though, is the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative continues to make progress in the three neighborhoods that it focuses resources in. And over the last year, several improvements have been made to those neighborhoods. Park improvements, new sidewalks, street trees. Of course, infill housing is happening, and housing rehabilitation is happening, and all of that helps build community and capacity through all of the interaction that we have with neighborhoods and building their investment in their own places where they live and the things that they do. What are those neighborhoods? Classen, Tenpen, Colbertson, East Highland, and Classen's North Highland Park. I always say those wrong. Housing programs, another thing that we constantly work on in the Planning Department. This does help implement a lot of our goals in Plan OKC. Housing rehabilitation has accomplished several things, 18 whole-house rehabs in the last year, 37 exterior rehabs, and 104 emergency repairs. And then, of course, the Down Payment Assistance Program has assisted 59 families and leveraged almost $5 million in private mortgages, funds, and buyer contributions. So this is one of those things that without this program, without these funds, we wouldn't see that the types of housing revitalization or neighborhood revitalization happening in Oklahoma City. And then many sustainability programs are underway. We have other grants that we've received, too. The Greening Americas Communities is a technical assistance grant. It was offered through Smart Growth, and this grant is going to be focusing on some of our one-square mile that touches several neighborhoods, Paseo, Central Park, Jefferson Park, and Edgemere. A team will come in and assess opportunities for green infrastructure and enhanced bicycle and pedestrian facilities and make recommendations to help improve those neighborhoods through this. The Solsmart Program is also a U.S. Department of Energy-funded program that's providing a temporary consultant to work with staff on solar policy and market development. It's a growing need and demand. We want to see more of in Oklahoma City. And then the Green Home Loan Program. It is a revolving loan fund. It's issued 76 loans since 2010, and none have gone into default. And it's revolved the original $330,000 into an investment of 1.7 times that to get homes retrofitted for energy efficiency. And then recently, the cigarette waste recycling program in downtown has installed 23 of these cigarette recycling containers, which you can see in the slide, onto existing Project 180 light poles. It's a joint effort between DOKC, Downtown Oklahoma City, Oklahoma City Beautiful, and the Office of Sustainability. And you can see the spoils of the bins there in the right. These are all recycled. We also continue to work with other city departments on many initiatives. Right now, the city is in the process of updating the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and as I mentioned before, good information is being supplied through some of the things that we've been developing in-house. And we also collaborated with the COTPA on the Northwest Multimodal Transportation Corridor Concept Plan. It was a partnership between us, COTPA, ACOG, and the Health Department, looking at the Northwest Classen Boulevard and Northwest Expressway as multimodal corridors. And I wanted to also mention, in one of our SNI areas, the creation of a new park, the new Fremont-Harn Gardens Neighborhood Park. It was a partnership between the Parks Department and the Planning Department using our SNI and block grant funds, and it was recently nominated for a Keep Oklahoma Beautiful Government Program Green Space Award for 2016, and it did receive an Oklahoma APA Award for an Outstanding Community Initiative. Speaking of awards, I also had to mention, in the last year, we were really honored to receive several awards for our Comp Plan. And the ULI started a new type of awards called the Impact Awards, and Plan OKC received the Best Public Initiative Award, and we just found out that the Oklahoma APA Conference, which is coming up this weekend, is going to be awarding us the Best Public Plan Award. We've also been asked to speak at different conferences about the Comprehensive Plan to help share what we've learned and maybe share some of the successes that other cities could use as a model at different conferences. In 2015, the National Conference had a session about public engagement. I really feel like that the process we learned over the five years we were working to engage the community gave us a lot of good things to share with other communities about the scope and the depth and the range of opportunities that we engage the public. We also, in 2015, had three sessions at the Quad State Conference and APA dealing with either our growth scenarios analysis and process or our health impact assessment. The health impact assessment for Plan OKC is actually something that National APA has been very interested in and has approached us, specifically John Tankard, who was one of the primary authors of that, to come and speak at the conference this year. So in 2016 and 2017, they've been reaching out because it has been such a valuable learning experience and model that can be implied in other places. So ending on that note, to toot our own horn, I think there are a lot of really good things that we've seen as a result of our Comp Plan over the last year. And as we talk about in Planning Commission, there are a lot of ways that we can keep improving the plan and improving our processes, improving our codes and ordinances. And I know that all of these people in the back have their eye on doing just that with the work that they do every day. And if you have any questions of any of our staff members about their programs, I'm sure they'd be happy to talk about them. And otherwise, we just wanted to give you an annual update.
I'd like to make a comment about what I've just seen. And over the last five, eight years, whatever, the transformation of this city has been from Z to A. And 95% of that is because of you guys, and you, and the hard work you put in and what's on your plate right now must be overwhelming. But when you see the results of what you've done and what the city's done and what the improvements have been, it's staggering. No wonder we got the best prize for whatever it is, because, and I just want to say, well, really, congratulations, your work is, it's what you guys have learned, what you were educated to learn, what you have experienced, et cetera, and these best practices that come into play. You've implemented them, and the result is what we have in this city, and it's growing and continuing on to get even better than it was before. Congratulations. Good.
Well, I do think, I think, you know, the staff has done a phenomenal job and continues to do a phenomenal job, not just in supporting us and making what we do a lot easier and a lot more coherent, but, you know... and a lot more coherent, but you know, I think Bob's right. It's very easy for someone who's lived here a long time to see how far we've come. And I, I do give you all the credit for that. I, I hate to hear myself say this out loud, but you know, I, I feel like there's this younger generation of people coming up through the ranks who are, you know, sort of excited and outward looking and, and I hear a lot less of, you know, we've never done it that way before and a lot more of, you know, let's find out, you know, how we might do it better or differently. And I think that the city is the beneficiary of that, the city and its citizens. I mean, the residents here are the beneficiary of that. And, and I see that as a, hopefully, an irredeemable trend, you know, that it's, that that's something that will continue and will just, you know, carry the city forward into the future.
Thank you, thank you all for attributing Oklahoma City's transformation to us. But it does feel like the, the progress that Oklahoma City has seen has been something that it was due for. There are a lot of decisions along the way that have really paved the way for what's happened to us. And a lot of the things that we work on, we really feel like sometimes we're chasing that good luck and fortune to try to make things work better for it, some lessons learned. But that's something I think we'll always be faced with. I do feel like we took a good leap when we adopted this comp plan. And I think it set some good policies in place and recommendations that will keep us busy for a very long time to implement. And one thing I, I have to say is that the whole attitude of everybody that works in this city, including the departments that we work with every day, is also enabling us to make that progress. The, the people in the city departments that have the attitude of let's figure this out. So our relationships have strengthened, I think, just since I started working here 16 years ago. The, the collaborative process and the people that are in those departments are problem solvers and they're looking at opportunities to make things better. I mean, we've seen it in the departments we work with incredibly closely to the departments that know about the comp plan now and know what their pieces of the comp plan across the city. So without that type of, of team spirit, I think it would, it would be harder for us to make the accomplishments that we have. But it's, it's really been a fun year trying to figure out how to work with the plan. We know that we're still working on some of our processes and have a very talented and smart and capable group of people, not in this room, but you know, not just in this room, but back in the office and, and doing the jobs that they're doing every day. And I, I cannot be, you know, a, a more blessed person than I am to be able to work with them. And I just thank them for everything they do every day. What's next? So does anybody else have anything they want to say or contribute or?
I've got a question. I mean, it's a technical question. Big old question. The money we're getting, the money for the impact fees, can we borrow against that money?
Personally or?
No, I don't know. For instance, we had this money today where it's going to be a long time before the impact fees pay for the improvements on several of the roads. But if we could go ahead and borrow from that money, pledge revenue from that fee, port to bonds, would you?
I did not work on the impact fee, but no, I would do, I would believe that we would not be able to do that. I think the impact fees have to go to directly towards the...
Well, we can spend it directly however we want, but I mean, we could collect it.
I'd have to find out for, for you on that, but, because I do not know that and I would not be able to do that.
It sounds like to me, from, from what Aubrey was saying, that there's, that there's perhaps some misconception lingering about what we're going to spend the, the impact fees on anyway.
We should, I'll line that in the bond, we can, our, but if we can't, the bond is a, a credit, the credit screen is coming in, the benefit is not a lot. But it seems like we have a, a ordinance required, that team, that bond, a mortgage, a bond and, and more taxes. We have no, we have no order at all, maybe a mod, but, but, important to see, they also want. I think I can.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adjourn. Do you cast your votes, please? It carries. Thank you all for coming today. We really appreciate you.